Call him in order. Uh, Alan, you want to say prayer?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call. Carrie Brady. Jimmy Clark.
Present.
Alan Moore.
Present.
Chris Fuller.
Present.
All present. All right, minutes for our November twenty-seventh meeting. Uh, we made a couple of copies just so we wouldn't lose any. That way if we, uh, write them, sign them wrong way. Just being prepared.
I make the motion, we approve the November twenty-seventh meeting minutes.
Motion approved, November twenty-seventh minutes. Call. Carrie Brady.
Aye.
Chris Fuller.
I guess I was there.
Jimmy Clark.
Aye.
And Alan Moore. All present.
I don't know what happened.
All right. Uh, we don't have any financial this month, so we'll have two months next month, he's not coming till tomorrow, so there's... He just bred up here.
Uh, yes.
So, but he gets, if he had been here, would have him, but he's not, he's coming tomorrow or Thursday?
Thursday.
Thursday, excuse me, it'll be on Thursday. Okay, uh, change signature on AEDC financial documents. Uh, right now, we still have Jackie Gardner and Bridgette, uh, on this bank account, we gotta change it. This is just money coming through for the grant for Resolute. It's their money, but it's gotta go through the city of Cleveland. In that account, that check runs through that, so it's just gotta have a signature change, just so we can move the money. It's ready to be moved, so can I have a motion to take, uh, Jackie Gardner and Bridgette Moore off the account, and I guess you'll put me and Ryan on the account. It's only... One check, we oughta go through it right there, right?
Oh, might get one.
Could be more, but...
Might be two.
Chris, make a motion.
This other package where Billy is from, AEDC.
Jimmy Clark. Which one?
Aye.
Alan Moore. All present.
This right here, the bank designated. You also need to vote on the exchange here from Bridgette and Jackie Y'all.
You can sign it. Okay, that was that part of it, and that is this part, Brenda, is that second part of it?
Well, you're gonna have to go to the bank and the actual checking account, you need to put just their names on it, but on this designated form, this is from AEDC, and then designate who is on the bank account. They need those two on the bank account, they need one more person to sign the grant forms, but it can't be the two that are on the bank account. So, we need someone that'll be here in tail when she comes that day. Did they hear me?
Okay, water, where is that at on the list? Do I need to sign these W nine's and everything?
Well, Y'all can tomorrow, I just need you to vote to put your own in.
So, we gotta add, we gotta add a third person.
It's both of you and then one other person that'll be on the check.
That's not on the bank account, so, um, Brenda could be on there.
Or Carrie.
Or Carrie are the two that are on any of our signature cards. So, they can't be...
Also, me and Alan are on.
They're already off, because you're on the signature cards for the bank. So, it can be, you're not on the signature card, Carrie, y'all... Okay, yeah, we just wanna change it. What do you read under that, okay? So, Carrie could be on it.
Be better if it's Carrie.
So, I need, y'all vote to put Carrie on the signature cards on this account, right?
It's not on the signature card, the bank, it's on the signature card for the form from AEDC.
Signature card for the form with AEDC, uh, we need a motion to put Carrie on...
I'll make a motion, I'll say it.
Have a motion and a second. All right, Carrie.
Aye.
Jimmy Clark, Carrie Brady.
Aye.
Chris Fuller.
Aye.
Alan Moore, all in favor.
I'm hearing Carrie.
Got three and four now.
I'm still doing my test.
Because I voted on the bank account, the actual bank account.
Then we have to have, do we have a motion to remove?
Yeah, that's what we had, we had a motion to remove, that was on number three, to remove and then add Billy and I. And then the other one was to add her to that bank signature card, not signature card, but the bank form thing. If I have to sign that, that'll be in the paperwork. I have this one too, you just left it on. That chewed paper goes with that, that grant control paperwork, Brenda, that goes with that. Okay, new employee, uh, police employee policy, if y'all are ready to approve it, we need to get that approved to be in effect first of the year, and then we'll need to approve. That made the, these made the changes y'all asked to be made on the holiday. It's where, uh, they got the full day off, Christmas Eve, it was a happy day, right, and the other? That was the only thing we had to change, I think. Uh, he added, he added for, uh, the maternity leave, basically, we'd be in compliance with the FMLA. We don't pay anything for that, we just allow the employees to use their sick time and their vacation time up to twelve weeks. There is a clause in there that city, cities and governments and stuff like that need to follow that, even if they're under fifty employees.
See, I wouldn't lose it with Dustin, he said that we don't, we, the FMLA's in there, basically, that they can take all their sick and vacation, if they need some more time off for life, they can take it for no penalty.
Right, not twelve weeks.
Whatever they need, you know, off their notes or whatever, so long as they, you know, they can take off whatever means their job's not getting done, and what this way should be. It's just we don't have to pay, you know, we don't have to pay them.
Yeah, we're not paying them. So, it's as long as we keep a job.
Correct.
And we also added that, uh, trial period time of the beginning when a new employee started, that Chris, you might explain that, how for the first three months, they're on...
What about like a ninety day probation period?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
So, we've added that, that whoever comes in is not eligible for sick time or holiday time, they're on three month probation period. Their insurance starts two months after they start, that's the municipal agency now.
Okay, but you don't get sick, you don't get sick than to a year right now.
We all don't.
Yeah.
But the city work is flip flopping.
We need to address the pregnancy thing too.
That's what they added in was the FMLA, they, it's in there.
You know, it is, I mean, it's not the best, you know, it'd be nice, we also don't have money to necessarily pay for a week or two weeks, but allowing them to have a job, I guess, is better than what we did have, so, you know, it just, it goes to say a lot for women to carry babies and create life, so, I think as a city, we need to look at that. Let's address the... You need to address the, uh, manual first, and then if you wanna do something on pay, you can do that as a separate, that will have to be in the manual. Or y'all can change it, you'll have a manual rate approach for January, whatever you wanna do.
What'd you say?
So, if you wanna address doing something else on pay, you had it as a separate line, not into... You got two girls pregnant, both, both of your water girls are pregnant, do it with them, I guess you must have drank the same water the same day, 'cause they... I think they're both, why they both with each other three weeks of each other?
About two weeks.
Thank you. We'll see how they come, but we're about two weeks apart, so we're gonna have a rough time over there.
That's made a soup, it's a little red.
Yeah, but it's made a soup, Rick Cook. But anyway, do I have a motion to accept, uh, the police department, uh, personnel policy handbook?
Greg, did you, is everything, did you have anything you wanted to add to it?
No, I haven't, I haven't really.
That's what I was thinking, you need to talk about here.
Been working on this for a year.
Yeah.
I will tell you, leave you all, please. They're two different, yeah, they're two different. The police. Have a motion to accept the city of Glenwood Police Department Personnel Policy Handbook, have a motion and a second. No call. Jimmy Clark.
Aye.
Alan Moore.
Should we have a couple of one minute discussions before we have to back down?
Motion's second on the floor, you can have a discussion before we vote on it, yes.
If we hire, I know we've talked about this in back and forth and whatever else, but when we hire an officer and they go to the academy, or we send them off for this up training, or this, and this, and this, or... Do we have an in place contract, they signed with us currently, that they, you know, if they leave within a year, that they will pay us back for, you know, us paying all the expenses that they're giving going over there, and they're going through the classes, and they're going through, it costs a lot of money, and we've lost some really good, uh, officers that we've spent a lot of money on, and I know it's that way to every employer, but there is some things in place. I just wonder if we have it, it's been talked about so much. I wanna know if we actually have it in place, but I am in favor of this.
Did you say, Greg, that if somebody leaves, that the other department has somebody else?
If they leave, I think it's eighteen months. The, the state regulates that, that if an officer goes, you send one to the academy, you say he leaves in nine months, and goes over to another department. We can submit the paperwork to that department, and they'll give us back for his, for his trial.
Eighteen months and he goes immediately, I guess. Whatever the timeline of eighteen months is.
But if he quits, no.
If he quits, police...
And they tell you at the academy, there's only twenty percent left of whatever goes to the class in two years. That's how much falls out. So, if you've got a hundred in a class, you've got twenty of them after two years, it's still gonna be a long work, but the other eighty basically has quit and went and done something different.
It's not for everyone.
We have a motion and a second, and we scored it.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, I got it. Chris Fuller.
Aye.
Jimmy Clark. Alan Moore. Carrie Brady. All in favor for the employee police policies. What you warning is covered for eighteen months. From what they're saying, it's gonna...
A lot of them they just quit, it's only if they go to another entity.
I don't think they'll do anything, they're not using license anyway, so I don't think they're gonna even do it on that, I don't think. Sorry, no choking? All right, you have the city of Glenwood Employee Personnel Handbook, for all the rest of the employees with police authority, any motions to tip there? Have a motion and a second? Any discussion? Carrie Brady.
Aye.
Jimmy Clark. Chris Fuller. Alan Moore. All right. Tomorrow, I am supposed to go with, uh, highway department and the city engineer. The sidewalk project is a mess, to say the least. Almost every handicap ramp has been taken out and repoured. And that will be at the contractor's expense. I gave you a sheet of all this stuff, and, uh, it tells you everything that they've gotta redo. Both on Mountain View, I'm not on Mountain View, both on Tennessee and on Highway Eight. I don't agree with the way things get done in these projects, because to me, if they're pouring the wrong grade of engineer, I'll stop them, but he can't stop them to the end of the job and make a redo. And they just kept doing it wrong. So, with that being said, uh, there's four spots on Park Street, there's numerous spots on Highway Eight, and first off, if the little rubber map is set there and not turned square with the next driveway, that's a known fact, you got, because a blind person's supposed to be, that map, they know where to walk to the next one, so if you gotta turn, you're walking around the street where there ain't no... All of those gotta be tore out, and then the grade on them is wrong. All this up here by the car wash, you know, that, that one grade's a foot too high. That's all on him to redo, okay? Now, when we get to Tennessee Street, that was designed, the curve was in there on all that project. And evidently, the city has bid that, that was all done before I got here. I'll take the blame, I guess, mayor, me, it got done during my deal, but anyway, I didn't know, um, that doesn't meet like at the intersections on, let's start with Third Street down there, if you look at Third Street, we had a colder inlet box right there. And you gotta come off of that street and get a handicap, gotta be one of those little yellow pads poured in there, that's turned nine degrees across to the other sidewalk project. And for a blind person, when he goes to the other sidewalk, no place to go back on sidewalk, so you're gonna have to tear out a section of that, that was not done in this job. The turning, the turning down Third Street back to your left, to go over that, going back toward Cemetery, was not done in this job. But they're gonna have to tear back and get that drop inlet tore out that was there before the job started. That's gotta be tore out and fixed. You understand what I'm saying? You're gonna have to turn and go four or five foot down Third Street, and on the other side of the sidewalk kids, that's gotta be cut out in a handicap for a blind person to get in there. That was not in the job. If you look at this, he's asking for forty-nine thousand eight hundred forty-four dollars and fifty-five cents for an estimated change order. I'm not happy with that. And then you come up, as they go to Fourth Street, we have the same problem. You're gonna have to make the turnout, tear out the drop inlets that were already in it, those had drop inlets on Third Street and Second Street already, those have gotta be tore out, they were not, this contractor didn't do that, it was, the city had that done, not under any contract. But then to put a sidewalk on it and change, I don't know why that wasn't designed in the project, but it wasn't designed in the project. Okay? And highway department's come up, this handicap accessible ramp, I guess engineer may have thought that that was already in there, and it didn't apply, but when you tie the sidewalk to it, ADA does come into application. And then you go on up, and he's got some of the ramps that he's gonna have to tear out and fix a grade and a sidewalk, and go back down, then you get down to Hill Street, have the same problem. Gotta be, go out and fix. And then Sixth Street, okay, I think. I'm going with Jason Effer from the highway department, be here again tomorrow. This contractor has got tons of work that he's gonna have to tear out, and that's on him. 'Cause he put it in, it's not put in by design spec, and this, I don't understand, when you hire a contractor, you got an inspector on the job, the inspector can't tell him it's done wrong, because he's gotta have, until he says he's ready to inspect, the time to correct his problem. This does not make sense to me. But the contractor, when he came up here and looked at what his crew did, said, "We're wrong." He said, "We got there, I fixed it," he said, "I'm not arguing that." I don't know if some of this forty-nine thousand eight forty-four fifty-five sounds high on what we got to say that wasn't done in his bid. And I was out in Vegas working last week when they came, so I, till tomorrow, I don't have, I have not looked at the project. And I talked with Kyron on it today, he said, "We need to go back and negotiate this price," but he said, "Let's look at, if it's something that they've already, that they did, that they put in, that they're tearing out, that's not our responsibility." And I told Kyron, "I want you to come in here on this and give to me, uh, removing concrete on Tennessee and Hill Street to the corner." Okay, if that's something, the square footage of that needs to be measured, in my opinion, and if it's something he didn't do that was already there, it's gotta be tore out, we owe for that. I, I don't have a problem with that, but if it's, I don't wanna pay for his room and board and equipment rental and all that stuff, all stuff that he's gotta have on the job to redo his stuff. To me, this needs to be broken down by the square footage of what's not, that wasn't done in the bid, that's gotta be redone.
I'm not in favor of giving him any, any more money at this point, because he's done too high with the money he got, until he starts correcting some of this stuff, then if we can legitimately show us...
Yeah, he won't get this...
Reason for the change order, then that's a different story, but...
He won't get this change order. I'm not, I'm asking you to give me the authority to go with it up to that much, if that's what they show us is not that is, if he has done the work in response for fixing it, we ain't, we ain't paying for it. We've got work in here that's not in the bid. And I want that done by the square foot, just like his bid was on the work he did. I, we owe him for the square footage of what he didn't do, that's gotta be fixed, we owe for that, I agree with that. I don't think it's forty-nine thousand eight hundred forty dollars, and I want it done by the square foot, just like he bid the job, not, not living, uh, travel expense, uh, per diem, travel miles, sixty-six hundred dollars. That ain't our fault.
I'm trying to figure out how you got twenty-seven hundred dollars worth of materials.
And thirty-one thousand dollars more labor, and per diem and travel, six thousand dollars and equipment rental. That's not the way, this is not the way the job was bid, and Kyron agreed with me today, they need to do a square footage, just like we paid him on the sidewalk. All he's tearing out, he's gotta redo.
So, what do you want us to do, authorize you to spend whatever you think's fair?
No more than that right there, but I won't, I'm not gonna spend more than...
That's the forty-nine thousand.
Right, but I'm not gonna spend any more than what the bid on the square footage of the job was, that's in his contract that we're paying for. For work that's additional.
Can you, can we not bring you back when he gives you the correct...
Yeah, we wanna hold him up another month, he's wanting to start in January. But I don't have, I don't think they're gonna have this number ready for me till they go down there and see what's gotta come out.
So, then when is that, once on the month, like if it could be?
Well, they're, they won't, they won't come here and do it all in January, do it all at once, but we won't pay them for it anyway, 'cause this change order won't be paid for the works done. But this change order up here, I just need an authorization to go, are y'all authorized, how much money you want me to say we can spend? I don't know what the square footage, I don't want to spend any more money per square foot than he was under contract to do for work that wasn't in his contract, that we've gotta do to get...
If he's wanting to start January, then he needs to provide us with the proper stuff so he can start working January, I mean, it's not our fault, we're holding, he can do it that first time.
What he's, okay, the work he's gotta correct on, he's already been paid for.
So, he can start on that.
Exactly. What is, what they're asking, what this change order's doing, and I don't believe that's right, is I want a square footage for what was already installed and it touched.
I'm saying, well, tell him to provide us with that number.
Okay, that is, if that, y'all give me the authority to spend it that way, I don't, whatever that number is, then I'll tell him, he can, we'll pay him, y'all agree to pay him for what was not in his contract, it's gotta be done to complete, not anything more. If y'all give me that authority, we'll go at it from that viewpoint. There's work here that's not in his contract.
I agree that, but I don't wanna bid it outright.
I wanna bid outright.
Oh, I'm not, I'm not gonna check this right here. I want it bid, I want him to bid it by the square footage that he did, all the work he's doing is nothing, what he's doing is nothing more than was in his, there's not a line item in his contract for already.
No, we, we, our other, um, con, uh, sidewalk guy is tied up for one hundred and forty-four years, and that ain't him, that's not...
But we're under contract to him, he's gotta come clean up his cash, and we're not gonna give him more, the state's already held our money up. We've already, we've got a bid, a amount turned into the state, and the state's not gonna pay anymore till this is cleaned up back to us. And we've already done a draw on that, paid the contractor. But the state's not gonna pay us for that draw till we get this cleaned up. So, we're holding money up in street money, coming back, but it doesn't matter, we're not gonna get paid another dime on our reimbursement money from the state till his problems are all cleaned up, state's hold, put a hold on the money. And that's, I'm fine with that, I mean, till it gets corrected, that, it needs to be corrected. All I want you to do is, if you would, is authorize to do only what's done, 'cause I don't pay anything more than what's done by the square footage, if you've got ten foot of curb to redo, that's not in the bid, then we'll pay him for whatever the old bid was, times ten foot, it's in the bid. If there's a drop inlet he's gotta rebuild, there's at least three drop inlets that's gotta be rebuilt that he didn't touch. So, those drop inlets, we're gonna hold for. And there's a price in the, his contract for those drop inlets, I'm not, don't have the contract here, I'll have to go over to the building now, 'cause record's been on the...
Over around twenty-six hundred or something like that.
Whatever they are, that's a line item bid, and then the square footage of sidewalk he builds is a price, and that handicap ramp with the little yellow thing in it, and he's gotta put any of those, I don't think there's any of those extra, because he's gonna take out ones, and that, those may be put back in at the end, but to me, we shouldn't have to pay for that, because it's already in the bid. But I'll argue all that, I just need to know how...
I'm, I'm as motion, I, I'd like to make a motion, authorize you to use your best judgment of these people, look after the city. Not exceed the amount. I'd rather have the project.
I would do it. I won't do anything more than, I'm not gonna, whatever y'all want is fine, but I'm not gonna authorize anything more than a bid by the square footage, or linear, if it's square footage or linear foot or a drop inlet, that wasn't in the original contract, we gotta pay for that.
It's not like he doesn't have enough work to do, we can get the numbers and come back to this next meeting.
Just vote if that's what you wanna do, that's what I'm proposing.
Start working on the stuff you need.
I need to vote my motion down.
I don't have a second.
You have a second.
Unless somebody second.
No. So, I don't have a motion on the floor unless somebody wants a second.
Well, my, my argument was, you're riding with him, you're talking with Kyron, you're checking it out, and obviously, only if you're not gonna, you're not wanting to get hurt off, so...
I'm not gonna...
Opportunity to do your job, that's just my thoughts, but I see their side too, so we don't, we don't really...
I will not authorize, till I get, I'm not gonna authorize this estimate. The estimate's gonna be for the square footage, or the linear, if it's square foot, or a linear foot, or a drop, ever how it's in the original contract, we need to pay for what that difference is, and that's it. And the rest of that, it's up to him. But y'all don't own it, y'all tell me, so I don't know what to tell him, if y'all wanna wait till you come back, I don't have, I don't have your heart burning, guys, I just gotta have what I need to do tomorrow.
I make a motion to wait till they get the correct numbers, any part of this, that's just me.
Have a motion to wait till they get the correct numbers, and have a second. Roll call. Carrie Brady.
Aye.
Alan Moore.
No.
Jimmy Clark. Chris Fuller. Okay. We, y'all will work with it, all I need to know. We're gonna hold some money out, y'all all know that, but I don't know, and I don't wanna. I, I was thoroughly upset, I talked to him three times on this, I said, "This can't be done." But anyway, y'all give me an idea on what we're gonna work with him on. The next item on the list, the, if you look at that, we have an older T eight seventy, uh, Bobcat two thousand nineteen, loaded with nine hundred and twenty, had nine hundred and thirteen hours on it, and the city, uh, M and M record has allowed the city to use it, and we've got it's got nine hundred and thirty-three hours on it now, and it seems like a very good piece of equipment. If you look at the picture there, not this picture, but exactly a picture in there of it. There's a picture, the back page is a picture of the piece of equipment. He does not want his money, if you agree to buy this the next year, and you've got the money in next year's budget, you'll have an issue budget, he'll want the money this year. He just wants to know if the city wants it, or if he goes somewhere else to sell it, and these kids here, uh, this kid's here new is about a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty thousand bucks is about where they're going new, uh, about eighty-five to ninety thousand's where they're going with this kind of hours on it. Uh, this has come available, on the Barry Walker situation, this is Barry Walker's, and Eminem bought all of the equipment from the lawyer, ever how that's going down, and he's got a clear title on this, and he's offered it to the city first. We need one.
I did some research on it, and, uh, one like it, a two thousand seventeen model with five thousand hours is going for forty-five thousand.
This is a two thousand nineteen. It's showing out there in thirty-three hours on the machine right now, and it will not be paid for until next year's budget, if you, but I just need to let him know whether you're interested in it or not. I think it's a good deal, but it's y'all's. We will still need to get a brush off to go with that, this just got a bucket, front bucket with it. Probably a third yard.
Yeah, it's a, it's their heavy duty, larger bucket.
This is the largest, uh.
It is a third yard bucket, though?
Yeah, at least that, it's a big bucket. Could be a fourth, I mean, it's probably a third, I think it's a third, not a fourth.
That's the largest machine Bobcat.
Yeah, this is the largest machine Bobcat, my eighty-three.
Is that deaf on it?
It's got ninety-five horsepower engine, that's a, that's a good one.
Hundred horse.
Hundred horse, yeah.
High flow?
A high flow or a low flow?
I was gonna ask that, with it, 'cause it has where you can run the heavy.
Boyton, Eminem said, "Don't ever have a low flow," and everything, I don't have to, just cooperate with it.
It's worth the sixty-five thousand, I make a motion to buy it, thank you.
Have a motion to buy the two thousand nineteen TH seventy compact tractor. Have a second, rock on. Jim Clark?
Hi.
Chris Fuller?
Hi.
Carrie Brady?
Hi.
Y'all more?
Hi.
My all family.
And you're gonna work that out with me later?
He don't want to, he wouldn't take a chip, he don't want, he won't do it next year. Now, he just asked me to commit to whether he's gonna buy it or not next year. Early. Old work.
Okay. You talk about work. Sorry, behind you.
No.
Over here.
Yeah, over there.
Oh, I'll give it, I'll give it.
I'll give it, I'll give it.
I'll put it behind you.
All that one?
Just that front row.
Another one?
We're in the process of getting the city's webpage back up. Uh, we went and resurrected it from before the crash quarter, years ago, whenever it was. And, um, this webpage right now is gonna be a working webpage for us. I just wanna show you what it was like, uh, on this page, the coming events, and the next meeting agenda, you can post, we can post that on the front page all the time. Did you say city records is right? Chris?
Yes. Sorry, yes. Well, no.
No, yeah.
To the right.
I go get it, here. All right, so right now, if you go into Glenwood AR dot net, well, Glenwood, uh, AR dot com, we got that back from the guy that had been let go, and our city's webpage was down completely. So I've got this as a working webpage for knowledge right now, and, uh, we've got all of the, everything, sewer, uh, the daily records of what everybody's done, sewer plant is here, the DMRs are on here, the minutes are on here, the ordinances for this year are on here, the resolutions on here. Now that, on the minutes, if you click the minutes, I only have last month's minutes in here yet, so far, the girls are working on that, they have all the ordinances, all the resolutions, and I have all the DMRs, and then all of those, and y'all need to tell me, everybody wants information available, I got no problem with it. That's our meters on every pump station we got. That's what the guys are putting in the, on their daily worksheets, they're putting it here now, uh, they weren't keeping any records of any of this at all, uh, now we are. Uh, but if you go into minutes, and go down there and click, uh, on minutes. Everybody keeps asking for premium information act on this, it won't be even premium information act, it's all out there. Now that, I don't have all the minutes, but from last month back, because we're just getting this up, and they will start putting them in, and like, uh, and they'll get the ordinances all in there, and they'll get the resolutions all in there, uh, but, you know, I had to start somewhere. We started with sewer plant first, is all the information, everything on sewer, and of course, DMRs is something I have to keep on file anyway, everybody wants those, since we've given you all those every month, they're gonna be, the DMRs are all posted up through November right now. This looks different, now look at it still. Shoot, come on, shoot.
No, go over to your download, y'all. Little arrow down the top, click on that.
Where?
No, right there. No, click on that top.
All right, there's your agenda, and you just gonna scroll, everything's there. There's your, uh, rest of your agenda, and just keep going down, there's your sign sheets on the, proving the minutes. It's all, everything, we're gonna put everything that the city does, that I got anything to do with, it doesn't have to be private, it's gonna be, that's the ordinance, and the ordinance will be in the minutes for the month it was approved, and then the ordinances will be in the ordinance file. And the resolutions will be in the minutes for the month they were approved, and then they'll be in the resolution. Now that, uh, I don't know if people know what they're looking at, when you start looking at, there's a financial statement, well, there's financial statement, and it was presented. So the financial statement for the, like, October was presented in November, so it'd be, and we didn't get December's, uh, didn't get November's today, so it won't be on there in January's minutes, 'cause they all approved it, so the, if the accountant doesn't get here to get them in to the minutes quick enough, they'll be a month behind, but they'll be there as quick as the council approves them, and I can put this, if you want it, uh, y'all gotta tell me how you want it, this is something we can do. Y'all seen enough of this, you know what this is. Uh, get back to right here, get back to right here. If you want, uh, for instance, before the meeting starts, there's a, a meeting page that I think may not be turned on right now, but this says meeting, upcoming meetings, you can put the agenda on for the upcoming meeting there, and you'll be there, and then it will move over to your minutes at the end of the meeting. Uh, but if you wanna go into, if you wanna look at, this is all the work the guys are doing, that's the board, right there's the times, you check the hour meter, you click onto that, and it'll tell you the hours on the meter, this is everything going on the sewer plant. We're gonna have everything going on the water department, we didn't have a static IP up there as quick, and, uh, DJ's just having to work on this, between stuff at the store and getting the guys trained how to get all of this on there, but, uh, by the end of the year, hopefully, we've got all of this year's minutes in there, all the ordinances are in there right now, all of the resolutions are in there right now, if you click on them, bring them up, they're there. Now that, the big question is, I don't care, I, it's there. That's all the worksheets that the guys are doing, you want everybody in town to be able to see them, I'm fine with it, I have nothing to hide. Or is that too busy? I don't care, 'cause when you put water on here, you're gonna, screen's gonna get a lot longer. I don't care to let people see, I don't know if people's gonna understand what they're looking at, like on the op sheets on the water department. I have nothing to hide, we don't have anything to hide, I don't care if it look at, I don't care if it's out there, to me, it's kinda.
When you got nothing to hide, the people are gonna chase, pick the worst case scenarios they can, certain people, to make it look as bad as they can, and, uh, so I, I want to be very transparent, but at the same time, I don't want to necessarily just lay a bunch of fodder out there to, to wreak havoc, you know, and stuff. But I get where you're coming from.
This is, this is the work that the guys are doing in the field every day. I'm not gonna put a water meter reading over there, I'm not doing that, but, I mean, pump stations and, and the test results will be there, the DMRs, DMRs have to be better for public anyway. And I already got all them in here, the DMRs are, you know, I'm not using this laptop, but, all the DMRs, I think they were, they're up there. So, by the way, November DMR was good and clean, we didn't have any problem.
Down three.
Up there, up one. Third DMR.
To be honest with you, I'd say the first four at the top, one DMR, and I'd say that'd be about which one they'll vote, and I don't even know which are, hours are gonna be standing still, anything else, I don't know.
And this is open to, they cannot do anything in here, but look, you don't have to have a password, you gotta guess, there's no, the city employees gotta have passwords to get their change in. But, uh, the public, whatever y'all say, leave up on that front screen is, y'all need to tell me, and it'll be, it's just a simple click a button, and that, if you don't want those worksheets showing up, it'll be there, if you want them, I don't care, I, I don't.
How about we, we all just table the thing, we won, and give us a chance to review it over the next month, and we'll do this.
That'll be fine, I'll leave them up right now, and y'all tell me next month, if you want something turned up, that's not on, we'll tell you what you want turned up, we'll turn it up. And hopefully by this time next month, all the water will be there. I'm not trying to hide anything, this is just a working pro, all this stuff that y'all wanted done, I'm, it's taken, I can't get it done overnight, do all the other things we're doing. I'm trying to get stuff done, and, and the city employees are learning how to do it, and, uh, this isn't a beautiful webpage about the city of Glenwood, it's basically a working webpage. If you wanna do something more, but it is, and we have the domain name back from Glenwood AR dot com, and Glenwood AR dot net's where it is now, DJ was working on it from Glenwood AR dot net, we on both of those websites now, we're back with, uh, GoDaddy, uh, and so, websites are back ours, and we can do more with this website, it'd be nice to do more with the city website than this, but, this is what we have, and it's, uh, I wanted you to see just what we're doing.
Do you not have a tab for the water department, where they click it, and then all the reports would show up, so you're peeling them so long?
Good, y'all just got, this is just, all I'm doing, just telling you what we got, and we can, DJ can add that, and click it where you go down, if that's what you want, y'all tell us how you want it. Well. And y'all haven't had a chance to look at this yet, so this is just, I'm just telling you, this is what we're working on, and you gotta get the backbone built, and then you can do whatever you want through the front. Okay? So, it's up, right now, you can only get on Glenwood AR dot com net, but Glenwood AR dot com will be pointing. DJ got the permission, we got the permissions back, it's been a long, hard task getting the stuff back from the place that was doing your software, whatever, for everything for the city, they didn't wanna give, share any information, we don't have that, but we got, kept drilling, kept drilling, kept building, and we finally got it down. Uh, we're getting printers to where instead of running nine printers here at city hall, we're down to three, gonna get down to three. Don't need running all those, uh, inkjet printers, they're very expensive to print on, and we got printers that we're paying lease on, and it's less than a penny a copy to make, and that, they furnished a toner for that, don't even be printing on anything else. Why, why are we paying for toner for copiers that's costing six cents, five cents a copy to make? We got a copier that'll make six cents, but you just didn't have the full amount to go to those copiers, they're all, they're all set to where all the computers will go to the office, where the printer's at in the office, and it'll all print now. We're getting all that set up, and that's not all finished, 'cause you just now moved that department over there, and you had to redo this whole city hall here, and get it cleaned up, and, um, you're putting new, uh, routers and new firewalls in for your security protection, and, like, the state police won't back in here, and we've already got there, they're gonna get the old water office that they used to have, they wanna be back in here January one, uh, so they're gonna get that office back, uh, where, your dollar, your dollar. Ask, her office is where they had, and they're gonna get that office back, so, uh, they won't be back in here, and I, I think it's a good deal, if the state police wanna have it back at city hall to work in, I think that's a good deal for us. And we're gonna have a spot in there where the county wants to sit down and bring their laptop out of the car and work a few minutes. I'm gonna fix him a spot to sit down and work their laptop for a few minutes. The more we can work with these police departments, I think the better we're gonna be. And we need to be friendly with this office, we've got some room to let them be there. I don't know how y'all feel about it, I wanna take Brenda's office and put a wall up, kind of down that way, and then where Brenda's desk was, to put all the files in, and make a conference room in there, all we'll do is just put a two-four stud wall and some paneling on it, so you don't have to look at all that other stuff. We need a conference room, I mean, there's things you need to meet that, we don't have, the police need a room they can go and speak quiet and talk to somebody, and, and sometimes I'd like to talk with some people, and y'all might like to talk to some people, where I know we don't have room to do that in, and I wanna take that room for them. I'd like to get the breathalyzer moved out of here and moved it where Miranda's desk was, is what, what he wants to do, and get this back open to a room we can rent out, put the kitchen, put a microwave and a kitchen sink back in there, so you can rent this building back out like what it was meant to be.
We took the kitchen sink out?
No, sink's there, it's the stove and all the rest.
Stove and all that's out, it's there, that stuff just needs to be put back in like it was, canisters are still in there, I looked in there, but, it needs to be set back up like it, uh, needs to be, uh, to rent this room out like it needs to rent, uh, so, we're moving all record keeping on the water, as far as water maps and all that up, uh, I've got it cleaned up. That shop area that's bad for years, it's a mess, I've got that front room cleaned up, we gotta get mapping in it, they got the maps up for all the sewer, we gotta, ready to start doing it. Well, our man will let him get that done for the sewer project, so we're gonna move all the records on, right now, we have records for water and sewer maps in three locations, can't find anything in, we gotta get them all in one location, we're working on that, removing all the parts to one location instead of four. We have parts for the water and sewer department, four spots, I'm getting that all consolidated to one spot, makes a lot more sense, 'cause you don't know what you got where, and you got them in four spots. But that's things we're working on. All right, y'all cool with all that, we're ready to move on?
Yeah.
Okay, resolution.
Twenty-three seventeen.
Twenty-three seventeen, would you please read that?
Yeah, so speaking of cleaning up all that stuff over there, resolution twenty-three seventeen, resolution authorized the destruction of old unused equipment authorized by ACA one four point five nine point one oh seven, and for other purposes, whereas the city of Glenwood, Arkansas has acquired and sustained an amount of unusable equipment over the years in the course of business and operation in the city, and. whereas, over the years, this equipment have accumulated, taking up storage space, while the use of this is no longer needed by the city because it's broken and unrepairable. Whereas Arkansas Code fourteen point five nine point one oh seven authorized municipal corporations to destroy certain unusable equipment. Destruction will be removed and destroyed, hard drive thr- trashed equipment, and whereas the city council has determined that it is appropriate to authorize the mayor and the city treasurer or their duly authorized representatives to take all that, the actions needed to destroy the affirmative equipment listed in the attachment number one of the city of Glenwood deleted items list, destruction sheet twelve nineteen two thousand twenty-three. Now, therefore, be it ordered by the city council of the city of Glenwood, Arkansas, section one, the mayor, city treasurer, and the designator, the designator are hereby authorized to move and terminate equipment to coordinates with the affidavit attached and incorporated with the resolution by reference. Section two, the resolution shall be effect immediately upon passage, this is ordered on the nineteenth day of December two thousand twenty-three. Then there's a list, attachment number one, it's a copier, laptop, 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 computer, HP printer, LG computer screen, time clock, Netgear router switch, Intel switch, Netgear switch, Netgear switch, link key adapter, Sonicwall wifi adapter, sensor server, Canon printer, Canon printer, so there's the items that want to be destroyed.
Did you read that resolution?
I, I did, and that's very, very fun to read, um, this affidavit of destruction of records. I'm gonna have to read this, or we'll just silence. I hope someone does.
If anybody wants to see what we're getting rid of, it's on that table. And the only thing that could possibly be still working in that is that one printer, that one inkjet printer, hasn't been running a year and a half, and it's got the heat cartridges that were in it a year and a half ago, and I haven't tried to run it, 'cause it's, if it's not dried up, they assume it will be, but that's the only piece of equipment, all the hard drives have been taken out and drilled, that server, with a high dollar server, that little flat thing down there, but, uh, it's six thousand dollars to put a new operating system on it. And we went with sensors, we went in the cloud, and the city don't even have a sensor server anymore, but it's, the operating system went down, that was six grand, just to put an operating system on that big server, and we don't need it.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, gentlemen, the motion, Alan seconded the motion to destroy the equipment. Carrie Brady? Chris Fuller?
Aye.
Jimmy Clark?
Aye.
Alan Moore? My whole favor.
Hey, in the future, can we put something in here that says like, it's, if it's over, if it's under a certain amount of money, that you don't have to bring this up and do this? Or if the equipment is so old? You see what I mean? Can we not put something in motion to do that?
I think it's.
Punishment.
If we spend money, if we spend money on it, when we get audited.
I'd like to see every receipt, every serial number on every piece of equipment sitting there, if you're thinking we ain't got it all.
I agree, I'm just saying.
We might have some, what if it's not all there?
Discount our base, I can shoot and leave. Okay.
Yeah, the printer back in nineteen thirty-seven. Hey, the auditors, I've been down to where they're at. Here's a whole lot of this Glenwood, all on records.
You will honorize this tomorrow, right? Honorize this one, if you wanna bring, maybe yours up there, but we're not gonna. Alright, next thing on the agenda, showing you want the two insertion meters, this is a project that was talked about back when Bridget was mayor, trying to work on our leak detection, uh, they were quoting three years out on meters, we got a quote, uh, this week from, they're four weeks out. There's a six inch meter and a ten inch meter, the six inch meter will go in at, uh, Twin Bridges, no, at Hilltop, the eight inch meter will go in at, uh, Twin Bridges, and that's the cost of meters that's not installed. But that'll get, that project, they're ordered.
We saw that, or?
No. We, well, no. We could, I guess, we gotta have two each tap, we don't have two each tap, it's, we can't install.
Hey, but we don't have to do anything with this, this has already been put here, I'm right?
This was voted on in Bridget's day, I'm just showing you the process, and we finally got a quote.
And it's four weeks out.
There it is. And, uh, doggy baccus that we got, DJ's got six of those to put in.
TJ?
TJ, you got six of those to put in.
These all be a baccu, right?
These all be a baccu, yes, I'm not putting this kind of meter in, not at all. And the neat thing about this meter.
That we'll report back, alright?
That will tell you, our sensors, yes, and then you'll set your routes up to where everything passed those list stations, Miranda, or whoever the water clerk is, can take all the meters that read past that each day, and that meter, and compare your numbers to see if you got a leak. And it's gonna break it down in thirds, you'd have everything from Twin Bridges and everything from, those two, we'll break it down in thirds, if we can look for leaks. Uh, so, give us an idea of where we're gonna look and believe it on. So, that's just information, that's ordered, it was already voted on by the last council and the last mayor, uh, but it's given done.
I'd like a motion with Jerry.
I got a couple more things. Uh, the last sheet is not on there, our state aid for the, for next year, for the painting, we got turned down on, there was only seventy people that turned in supposedly, now they're saying a hundred and forty-six turned in. And they funded ninety-nine projects, so that should put us pretty good in shape for next year. Uh, but we won't get that money. Uh, we did get, and that may be why we didn't get funded on this, five hundred thousand dollar project to do, uh, Mountain D Road with, we're, haven't got anything official on it yet, but if the state did announce it and it's posted on the website, we are gonna get the money to get Mountain D Road done. Now that, you can make that motion, sir.
It does say, as a result of your request, we're gonna, I mean, after the real action, we'll use this.
Right, it'll be, it'll be the first one of next year's funding.
I'd like a motion with Jerry.
Have a second. Your favor? Well, you want me to roll call then?
Roll call.
All in favor. Short meeting, can you show me where we're gonna sign on?